The June 14, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order. We were going to have our board member Throh to give us our statement for the day.
Thank you Chair. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats, turn off their electronic devices, or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda items or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lying green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call a roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1, here. Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Present.
Mrs. Nancy Throh, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Lauren DeBick, Director of Community Engagement, and Mr. Brian Green, Director Talent Development, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the pledge of this evening.
Good evening Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Today is Flag Day, and it is my honor to introduce one of our community partners, the Friends of Marion County Veterans Park Foundation, who will be leading us in an inspiration about Flag Day and our pledge. So I would like to ask to join me up here, Mr. Ron Oplinger and Mr. Todd Belnap.
Good evening everybody, and thank you. We would like to thank Mrs. DeBick for her gracious invitation to appear before the Marion County Board of Education this evening, on a day which will forever remain hallowed for those who have served our beloved republic, as well as by all those who are grateful for the freedom we enjoy herein present day. While we may not be perfect nation, (cough) excuse me, having toured many countries, I hear I believe the United States of America remains the greatest show on earth. Excerped from the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs website, under a section called "Celebrating America's Freedom," this narrative is entitled "The Origin of the Flag." The flag of the United States shall be the thirteen stripes of alternate red and white, with a union of thirteen stars of white and a blue field representing the new constellation. (cough) Excuse me. There was a resolution adopted by the Continental Congress on June 14, 1777. The resolution was made following the report of a special committee which had been assigned to suggest the flag's design. A flag of this design was first carried into battle on September 11, 1777, at the Battle of the Brandywine. The American flag was first saluted by foreign naval vessels on February 14, 1778, when the Ranger bearing the stars and stripes (cough) excuse me, and under the command of Captain Paul Jones arrived in a French port. The flag first flew over a foreign territory in early 1778 at Nassau, Bahamas Islands, where America captured a British fort. The first claim was from Hartford, Connecticut, celebrating during the first summer of 1861. In the late 1800s, schools all over the United States held Flag Day programs to contribute to the Americanization of immigrant children and the observance caught on which individual communities. Bernard J. Singrad, a Wisconsin school teacher, reportedly spent years trying to get Congress to declare June 14 as a national holiday. All these attempts failed, the day was widely observed. Father of the Flag Day honors have been given to William T. Carey, who was created who has credited (beep) who was credited with founding the American Flag Day Association in 1888, while still a school boy in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Both President Wilson in 1916 and President Coolidge in 1927 issued proclamations asking for June 14 to be observed as a national Flag Day. But it wasn't until August 3, 1949, that Congress approved the national observance, and President Harry Truman signed it into law. The flag is a nationwide observance today, but Pennsylvania is the only state that recognizes it as a legal holiday. In closing, we are grateful for the Chairman Cummings and the entire school board for their time this evening. The Friends of Marion County Veterans Park Foundation looks forward to a meeting to establish a partnership with the Marion County Public Schools. We are excited to share what we have to offer as an educational venue for students and the staff alike. Thank you.
May I ask everybody to stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again to the Friends of Marion County Veterans Park Foundation. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Green as we celebrate some employees who are celebrating over 40 years of work with Marion County Public Schools.
Hello, good evening Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. I am Brian Green, the Director of Talent Development, and I'm joined this evening by Nora Choquet, a Coordinator in Human Resources. A major focus of the strategic plan is talent management. Our team, consisting of school and department-level staff, along with community engagement and professional leadership and learning, has worked hard this year to, with a focus on recruiting opportunities, a focus on promoting Marion County and Marion County Public Schools, and finally, a focus on grow our own initiatives in order to better recruit, retain, and recognize our future and current team members. This work has allowed us the opportunity to work with many instructional and non-instructional personnel and current team members, and we are excited to continue it. As part of this work, Ms. DeBick, Ms. Choquet, and I are excited to recognize longstanding team members.
Good evening. The Talent Development Team is honored to have the opportunity to recognize monumental milestones of our dedicated employees. Tonight, we will recognize team members who have served our district, schools, and learners for 40 or more years. Their service is essential to the operations of our district, and most importantly, in support of student success, our core strategic plan goal. We will now recognize those with 40 years of service, where they will receive a certificate from Ms. DeBick. We ask that they please line up in the front row after receiving their recognition and certificate. Congratulations to Wanda Batts, ESE Specialist, ESE Curriculum. Congratulations to Christine Douglas, Secretary, Fort McCoy School. Congratulations to Michael Mishkin, Psychologist, Mental Health and Wellness. Congratulations to Debbie Model, Clerk Generalist, Bellevue High School. Congratulations to Rebecca Rora, Director, Transportation. And congratulations Catherine Shockley, Teacher, Forest High School.
And please remain, few more to go. We would now like to recognize several dedicated employees who have completed 41 years of service. We'll start with Timothy Capps. He is an Application Specialist in Software Development. He's unable to be here this evening, but we still want to recognize Mr. Capps for his many years of service. And also, he is retiring this year, so if we want to congratulate Mr. Capps. Elizabeth Carter, Food Service Worker at Lakewood Middle School. Kathleen McGrath, a teacher at Madison Street Elementary, and congrats on her retirement this year. As well as Diana Thompson, Certification Specialist with Employment Services.
We would now like to recognize Sandra Watt, a Paraprofessional at Maplewood Elementary, who has served for 42 years. We'd also like to congratulate her on her retirement this year.
And finally, we would like to recognize Lena Phillips, a Secretary at Ward Highlands Elementary, who has served for 51 years.
And Kevin, hold them there because we're coming down, but go ahead and get that one.
Right, yes. Oh, I'd have to do some quick math.
Did he really? He ever say I've worked with him in a lot of cases?
I just close out real quick.
Had to look him up again.
Had plenty of those.
That's so cool.
Listen guys, on behalf of the entire board, I want to congratulate all of them that were just down there. That's almost 500 years of experience. I think it's 400, I think it's 497 years collectively. So you can't say that, we don't have the experience here. And whatever y'all, do me a favor, text me whatever it is y'all drinking, because y'all still look good after all these years with the Marion County School District. So if it's non-alcoholic, send it to me. Thank you guys, thank you.
Sure.
Yes sir. Yes sir.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Green, if you would, not exit quite so quickly. I would like to specifically point out this gentleman's long reign, both within the school district and outside, within the Boy Scout camp and some of those areas, and how he was the last time I saw him in a formal setting, it was being, I was on the 22nd floor, being recognized by the governor. So this is, this is an exceptional individual, and you've brought forth an exceptional presentation tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'm only as strong as the team around me, so I do appreciate that, and I certainly appreciate all of 497 years. I was doing the math on that as well. I was hoping to hit that 500, but it just didn't.
Was I right? Was my math good?
Your math was spot on.
Okay, good.
Now, this serves as a recruiting opportunity, that we have positions, and we can hit that three more years if they want to come back and work just a few more years. But anyways, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Browning, appreciate it, thank you.
And again, thank you to all of our exceptional employees that we have here in the district. Thank you. Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, Chief Financial Officer, please come forward to recognize schools with perfect audits for the 2021 fiscal year. Let me say it again, for perfect audits for the 2021 fiscal year.
Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez, good evening. We're going to continue in the vein of celebration, and we're celebrating excellence in bookkeeping. Of our 50-plus schools and programs, we are recognizing 23 schools tonight. So why is this so great? Our school internal funds are those who are held by schools which are not a part of the board's regularly adopted budget, and shall be used to benefit activities authorized by the board and administered by each individual school, and it's in accordance to the board policies, Florida statutes, and the School Board of Education rules. We have a small department, Internal Auditing Department. It is three people and a student worker that do an incredible job of performing annual audits and compliance audits and compilation reports for the Marion County Public Schools. This department is led by Christine Corrigan, who joined our district in 2015? I think that's right. And I want to turn everything over to her so she can give just to what we're recognizing tonight, because it is something that is worth celebrating in our district.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Board Chair Reverend Cummings, and Board Members. We would like to recognize 23 schools and programs tonight, because they have now achieved what we call a perfect audit for the 2021 school year. A perfect audit consists of no findings for that particular school year. In other words, they met all of our Red Book requirements, all of our Florida statute requirements, and our board policies. The certificate they are receiving tonight says "Award of Bookkeeping Excellence Presented in recognition of achieving a perfect audit with no findings for the 2021 school year." It is signed by the Superintendent Dr. Gullett and our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis. I just want to start by saying congratulations to all of you for this huge accomplishment. You have all worked so hard for this, and you should be very proud of the work that you have done. Sorry. Thank you for everything that you have done and everything that you do every day. I would like to call up each school and program, provide them with a certificate, and have them stay for a photo at the end. Would the following individuals come forward as you are called, and please stay up? College Park Elementary, Principal Ms. Teresa Forsyth and Ms. Secretary Ms. Christine Boiselli. Denellen Elementary School, Principal Ms. Karen English and Secretary Ms. Sheila Clay. They are unable to attend this evening, and we will make sure that they get their certificate. Denellen Middle School, Principal Mr. Ken McAtier and Secretary Ms. Carmen Armon. East Marion Elementary School, Principal Ms. Deborah Borg Schaefer and Secretary Ms. Judy Larimore. A Street Elementary School, Miss, Principal Mr. Ryan Bennett and Secretary Ms. Suzie Rainey. Fethinin Elementary School, Assistant Principal Ms. Angie Ponder and the former Secretary Ms. Jessica Puckett. Greenway Elementary School, former principal at Greenway, oh, she's, sorry, current principal Ms. Leann McCurchar, you gotta have one mistake at least, and Secretary Ms. Kelly Sullivan. Hillcrest School, Principal Ms. Lori Manressa, and former Secretary Ms. Peggy Rich, who's probably had more perfect audits than any other school secretary since I've been here, and she's now retired. The Homeless Needing Program, Former Director, Mr. Ken McAtier, current Director John McGowan, and our Clerk Specialist there, Ms. Becky Penyal. Howard Academy, the current Director is Dr. Stacy Varner Reese, and current Secretary Ms. Beth Falk. They are unable to be here tonight, and we will make sure they get their certificate as well. Legacy Elementary School, Principal Ms. Shamika Murphy and Secretary Ms. Liz Lucas. Liberty Middle School, Principal Ms. Melissa Forsyth and Secretary Ms. Beth Knife. Madison Street, Principal Dr. John Curly, who is unable to join us this evening, and his secretary, Ms. Michelle Knowles, is here. Maplewood Elementary School, Principal Ms. Chrissy DeSanza and Secretary Ms. Lori Raybold. The Marion After Schools Program, Coordinator to Ms. Pam Eubanks and Secretary Ms. Sarah Workman. Marion Technical College, Principal Mr. Mike Kelly and Bookkeeper Ms. Karen Marlin. They were also unable to be here this evening.
Can we pause for a minute?
Yes. You ready?
We're going to pause here for a minute.
Okay. Osceola Middle School, Principal Mr. Matthew Koff and Secretary Ms. Lori Hunter. Romeo Elementary School, Principal Ms. Suzette Parker and current Secretary Ms. Julia Lopez. Shady Hill Elementary School, Principal Ms. Deborah Riedel and Secretary Ms. Chandra Keiner. Spar Elementary School, Assistant Principal Ms. Renee Johnson and former Secretary Ms. Mina Hansen, who is also now retired. Stanton Wersdell Elementary School, Principal Ms. Cynthia Brody and Secretary Ms. April Stage. Ward Highlands Elementary School, Principal Ms. Teresa Buck and Secretary Ms. Lana Phillips. Wyamina Park Elementary School, Principal Ms. Joy Backsley and Secretary Ms. Jolene Hughes. And sorry about earlier, but I work with these people so closely that I get excited for them, so. My last comment is just to say thank you very much again, and congratulations to you guys. Okay. All right, thank you.
Can they, can they please keep standing, all of them? All of them at one time? I think, I think you deserve another applause for that, because it's a perfect audit. For us to have, I think I heard Ms. Boston Ellis say 23, 23 schools with perfect audits, that means you're doing what you're supposed to do every day, all day, all the time, and that means you don't take a shortcut. So I really want to appreciate what, just tell you guys, thank you for the great job that you're doing every day. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Perfect means perfect, that means excellent. So again, great job guys, thank y'all so much. Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for June 14, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packets, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's been an exciting evening.
It's been an exciting evening, and I'm excited, so.
Hey, I am too.
Superintendent!
That's okay, we're all celebrating. Thank you Chair, members of the board, great to see you this evening, and thank you for celebrating our outstanding employees tonight, much appreciated. I recommend approval of the agenda for June 14, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of item C 18.7 that has been withdrawn from the agenda, and item C 21.4, C 7.2, C 8.1, C 9.1, (cough) excuse me, C 10.1, C 10.2, C 10.3, C 11.1, C 13.2, C 15.1, C 18.2, and C 20.1 that have been pulled for discussion, thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? Moved by Board Member Throh.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same signs, passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26, 2022, school board meeting? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Throh. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion there being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 5, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Throh. Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. On that, the School Board should turn to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Thank you Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida Statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board's Clerk no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to Procedures for Public Comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless that statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The Board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Yes.
My name is Suzanne Ivaldi, E-O-V-A-L-D-I. I am taking exception this evening, honorable educators, to the derisive, hurtful, and disrespectful manner by which I heard when I watched the virtual replay of your work session. I was bothered about how the comments toward your conservative member, President Don Browning, were rather tart. I'm here this afternoon because not only do I sense a disappointing tone and manner of discourse, but that quite possibly a pattern or mode of operation is in play. I recall how Nancy Stacy was treated. For you see, your work session, your virtual replay brought recall to me of how I too suffered at the hands of academic politics, liberal condensation, and personal attacks, just because I was known to be of conservative bent. Quite the dread in today's media and educational swarm. For what it's worth, your positions as trustees of the public call for non-partisanship in your positions. However, I sense something else is going on here that I do not like. Mr. Browning, in an objective query, merely stated he was asking for information relating to time, extent, and cost to the district of the summer summit of the School Board Association for which we taxpayers are picking up your comps. Additionally, he asked but had not received data to confirm the local media's multiple galley stories pertaining to a tsunami of student demographics soon to hit the district and lay claim to more taxation on our long-suffering taxpayers, citizens, parents, business community. Though these requests brought to the surface a lack of uneven discourse that I found fraught with political overtones that I do not like. This man, your colleague, comes to his position from a far different world than either of you or of me, who are not part of the rub and buff of business or the military, as was my husband, Mr. Browning, served in the Navy. Are there any military personnel on the desk? He is a self-made businessman who had to operate on cost-effectiveness, cost-based characterization for his entire career, which is still current. We are products of a school system changed dramatically in the last 50 years. However, I differ somewhat. I have two master's degrees, undergraduate degree in journalism, and English language instructor. I was a 26-year, full-time, tenured professor at a very, very diverse Chicago-area college. I am hurt by elected officials introducing a partisan tone into your board meetings. I remember one of my journalism professors telling me, telling us would-be cub reporters, "I will flunk anyone who shows bias in your reporting of hard news." While Mr. Browning and I both are in our 80s now, may I ask that you forego such unseeming pettiness as I witnessed on your workshop virtual replay? Hurtful ageism is a 406 here. Additionally, I would like clarity on the Facebook page on your website of a parent who was told by someone in your apparatus that she and her husband are not their son's legal guardians. I've spent some time analyzing your website. I found it to be unfriendly. You're still carrying the Third Avenue location. If you're trying to obfuscate search data for the non-academic types, you've succeeded. The colloquialism of quote "pulling something off of your phone" is a 406. Changing your president's passcode to add an exclamation point but failing to pull him into your loop is another 406. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
I'm Gary White with It's Your Tea Party, Florida. We have extended conversations about our School Board. These teachers and people in our, that are our helpmates in teaching our kids were extremely overwhelming tonight. We're very proud of those people and we thank them for their service. We just kind of continue with a request to avoid this bulk consent agenda. We have always talked about examination, examination, examination. Million-dollar packets with no examination. If even these could be reduced by 1, 2, 3, 5%, the savings could be magnanimous, and all I believe it would take is a little bit of, of consideration and examination. This is omitted discussion. We have been talking about. Discussion of examinations does not exist. Pre-meeting secret, workshop already decided, consent, bulk agenda, no discussion, no examination. Please, let's try to make this happen for the next year, the next group of, of people who serve in this position that you so admirably have acquired, that they might be able to be put in a position of examination, going over the facts so that they make good decisions and are the final arbiter of the decision necessary to be made to get that, that school class, that chair, and that kid to be the focus of attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. That's it? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C 7.1 through C 24.2, with the exception of Item C 18.7 that has been withdrawn from the agenda, and Item C 21.4, C 7.2, C 8.1, C 9.1, C 10.1, C 10.2, C 10.3, C 11.1, C 13.2, C 15.1, C 18.2, and C 20.1 that have been pulled for discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. C 18.7 was withdrawn from the agenda. May I have a motion to approve Personnel Items, 2022-2023 Fiscal Year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Ms. King, I understand you pulled Item 21.4. You wish I have further discussion?
I did. I was just gonna let my fellow Board Members in our community know that I will be abstaining from the vote this evening as I do have a family member that is on that personnel packet.
Thank you, Ms. King.
May I have additional discussion on this item?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you so much. I wasn't gonna pull this item for discussion, but since it's already been pulled, thank you for doing that, because I would like to take the opportunity to discuss. Earlier this evening, just a vote ago, the Board did approve in the consent agenda, we approved an individual's retirement effective June 30th, 2022. And as a part of this particular item now, as a part of the 2022-2023 school year, we are approving a reappointment for that same person.
Yeah. Did you get a phone call?
I did get a phone call on that. I did. I just, I wanted to just express that. I certainly am very grateful for the many, many years of experience that that individual has given to this district. As a point of record though, it does still seem very, very awkward to me as a Board Member to approve a person's retirement that we just approved, and now we're in turn going to approve his reappointment. So if it's possible or if the Board would be comfortable with it, I would really like for us to amend this motion on the reappointment packet to approve the vote, to approve excluding the name of David Ellers. This has nothing to do with him. He is a wonderful individual and certainly would have been up for reappointment. But if we had not just voted, literally, just voted as a Board and took Board action in consent on approving his retirement effective June 30th, then I would be fully comfortable with us putting a July 1st through June 30th, 2022 to 2023 reappointment for Mr. Ellers as the principal of North Marion Middle School. But as a point of note, if this Board is comfortable with us amending this motion to say that we approve the reappointment packet excluding his name, I am open to amend that motion if you all are.
I agree with you. I didn't, I didn't consider the amendment, but it makes perfect sense to me because I, when I was reviewing the packet, I did realize that and it didn't make sense to me, and I, I think that's a great idea.
I'm okay with it. Yes. I can amend the, I made the motion, so if I can amend the motion that we're approving to vote to approve this packet with the exclusion of Mr. David Ellers' name for reappointment for the North Marion Middle.
I think, do we vote first and then we make the amendment?
We need a second for that amendment.
Do we have to vote on it and then amend it?
I'll second it.
I believe, I mean.
I think I can amend it while we're still in discussion, can't I?
Yes, I mean, I, let me, let me reference the, the section here to specifically deal with that because we need to, I, I need to be clear also, are we, we're not attempting to revisit the approval of the retirement.
No, no, that's already been approved in consent agenda.
We're simply, we're simply looking to amend here.
This one specific item. Yes, sir.
Right.
That I wasn't going to bring up, but because, but because it was pulled already, then I thought it would be cleaner if we just approved it with that amendment.
We do need a second to that.
Yeah, Mr. Browning seconded it.
So this motion has been amendment to 21.4.
And again, thank you, Mr. Ellers, for his wonderful service. This is nothing against him as an individual at all. This is just a point of business.
Thank you Chair. I would like to at least discuss the idea that while he would be removed from this particular motion, he would still be available moving forward for service as, as anyone would be able to be considered. Is that, am I clear? I mean, is that, is that, am I right in my assumption?
So we approved his retirement. So he's retiring from the school district effective June 30th.
And we're not assigning now. However, he still can be in the running for any assignment that would typically be available to a retiree.
I, I think I understand that.
In other words, this doesn't set a precedent for this man?
Not at all. I mean, this, he would, that's my, in my opinion, I'm open to conversation here.
Maybe a legal opinion on it, because I, I want to be sure we do not burden this man with, with any indication that this is ongoing.
So it would be no different, like tonight, you know, tonight we passed that, a vote that people are retiring. They weren't reappointed because they didn't apply. Mr. Ellers, when he was appointed to this position, did not share with the district that he was retiring. So that's why, when this packet was made, that's why his name is on there. But it's not gonna have an adverse, anything because he's retiring. And it's not like we did not rehire him because of a discipline issue or anything like that. He just chose not to come back to Marion County and the timelines just matched up perfectly. But we basically, you know, did two things. We reappointed, but then we also allowed for his retirement. So it doesn't really make sense to appoint him for next year when we know that he's retiring. So we're just clean, Allison's asking to clean this up, which makes sense to me.
That sort of, sort of addresses my concern, but I, I want to be sure that there's no precedent that is set, and we probably do need a legal opinion on it, especially for me to withdraw his name from this. So we just, I think we must be very careful in that regard.
In response to the first question, Roberts Rules of Order, Section 6, Item 6.5, sorry, Subsection 6.5, Section, Subsection 2, says if a main motion might be more suitable or acceptable in an altered form, a proposal to change its wording, either to clarify or within limits to modify the meaning before the main motion is voted on, can be introduced by moving to amend.
Okay. Let's do it.
That's what she made, a friendly amendment.
Yes.
So are we sure that Mr. Ellers does not want to pull the one that we're not trying to pull? Are we sure that he's retiring and not trying to be reappointed?
I don't know anything about Mr. Ellers' decisions or, or thoughts on the matter. I don't.
Thank you Chair, members of the Board. To answer your question, we received his retirement request and have processed that. So anything beyond that, we would have to confer with him, but he did provide us the documentation that he wants to and intent to retire.
And was he informed about the reappointment?
And Ms. King said this so well earlier. They came at a time where when the reappointment packet is provided to the employees, he did not indicate at that time that he was planning to retire. So that packet moves forward and they came at the same time. Sometimes it's just a matter of, of timing. Correct? Because we have other employees who retire before they complete that. That's correct.
Are you ready for vote?
No, I would like an answer to my question than on a legal stand. In other words, he would still be eligible for future appointments. This would not impact in any regard.
There are some, voter retirement.
Well, there are some statutes regarding like the drop program and things like that that, that come into effect, but, I mean, this is not a, this is not a termination or dismissal. This is, this is his request to retire. So once someone has retired from a state agency or from the school district, then there are some restrictions on how they may come back, once they've declared retirement, to the district, and those would apply.
So we would only, we would only, all that would apply would what would normally apply.
Right.
Nowwithstanding this action.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? All in favor of the amended motion that was given by Vice Chair Campbell, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously.
I did not vote.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry?
Ms. King did not vote. King did not vote. She abstained from that vote.
Oh, she, oh, she's, that's right.
Which is the reason that it was pulled in the first place.
That's correct. Ms. King abstained, so passes unanimously with the four board members, minus Ms. King. We good? May I have a motion to approve schedule, or to, motion to approve, schedule a public hearing to be held July twelfth, twenty-two to adopt Neola policies?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C seven point two. You wish to have further discussion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. I did. Um, the, uh, the idea of our policy, uh, manual and our policy system, uh, and the way it's grown nationally and in the state of Florida and in this district is beginning to trouble me, uh, greatly. I, um, I believe, uh, I, I went into this, uh, uh, recent, uh, uh, evaluation and, uh, and updating of these policies with a very open mind. Uh, I have come to believe that the, the way we're doing it right now, and I don't have the full solution, but I've, I'm coming to believe that the way we're doing it right now is loaded with problems, uh, for students, for families, uh, for our success, uh, as a school district. And I'll just, I'll just indicate the size. I'm raising my hand here from the table. That's about how big it is, and very small, about number nine type, actually number eight probably. Uh, so loaded that no human can follow it, so loaded that even this board and our staff can't keep up with it. And so we have to have a third party. And that worries me. That really troubles me. I'm starting to see, and I've been keeping track of third-party experts, um, uh, having to manage, uh, and we pay them, uh, a reasonable, you know, pretty high number, uh, to manage. It's, what happens is, these things get out of the realm of normal logic. They become shall and will, and they become very, um, golly, uh, just almost impossible for a, an administrator in a school to follow. Uh, it's like their hands are tied. And, and I would, I, I'm, I'm now of the belief that we should step back from what we're doing and perhaps have a manual, uh, have a policy manual that can be followed. Uh, I, I recently have been involved in like, uh, a portion of our, uh, policy manual, manual that has to do with harassment and has to do with, with discrimination, uh, age, military, uh, things that are just easy to handle, really easy to handle. But they're not handled, uh, uh, and I think part of it goes to this thing is so large, so incredibly impossible for a human being to digest. Uh, I'm thinking that may be, uh, where we are with this. It's not fair to staff to have to try to operate under something this big. Now, I know the Constitution, you can put it in your pocket, and there's a lot of law around the sides that you can't put in your pocket. But we're not that way. I think we should be able to have a manual that perhaps we had, uh, when some of these retired folks were operating, that was a much more reasonable size and much more, uh, easily updated and, and handled. If it's so big and so cumbersome and so detailed that we've gotta go to a third party that then handles these things across the nation, I'm sorry, I, I just don't feel, I don't feel, um, uh, comfortable. And while this isn't the item in itself, this is the hearing for it and, uh, that we're approving. And I would like to set this, uh, set this discussion in motion because we're, we're in a, we're in a time when a lot of things are changing. Uh, trust is a big issue. Uh, how we follow these, uh, how we follow policy, uh, is a big issue. So I, I would like to, I would like to, um, uh, end these remarks with, we can do better if we do it ourselves. We have a high-quality attorney onboard. Uh, I, I just think that this school district should be able to set their own policy, and it should not be, um, twelve Dodd Franks that nobody could possibly follow. Uh, sort of a Pelosi idea, well, let's pass it and, and we'll read it later, kind of thought. So, that's, that's, uh, my, my comments on it, uh, uh, Chairman, and, uh, while it's not for the item itself, I realize it's for the, uh, for the hearing on it, but I even, I don't think we're ready for a hearing on it. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Thor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Board Member Browning, I could not agree more with the majority of your remarks. Um, there's no policy that supersedes common sense, in my opinion, and this is the huge challenge of public education in today's world. And, and I'm reminded of our state legislature, and I believe there was one senator that said, "One of the best things I did for you this session was kill bills," because there were about three thousand bills in the beginning that got whittled down to a lot less than that. Um, sadly, so much of what we have to do in policy is, is statute-driven, um, through the federal government, through the state government, and then on down to what we're trying to accomplish. Um, as I sat there through all of those policy meetings with my eyes practically crossing, I was happy about one thing, and that was at least most of our policies, because, um, Vice Chair Campbell, I know you worked very hard on, on the wording to make sure that they were at least understandable. There was gonna be so many of them, at least most of them were just one page. And I would go so far to say that I don't think any bill, even at the federal level, should be more than ten pages, and should be written in layman's terms. So everyone knows what we're talking about. I think we accomplished that much. But, um, in terms of having a public hearing, I, I know we need to do it. Um, let's just put it out there that you've got two board members that aren't happy about it. So I have.
Since Ms. Thor brought my name up and, uh, Mr. Browning made a, a statement that, uh, you know, no one would read through this, uh, this board member did, uh, I, I did take the painstaking process of, of trying to read just about every word and, and because of the importance of it. And absolutely, the Constitution can fit in our pockets, but every single law that aligns with that Constitution that we all have to abide by, those do not. And that's why we have to have a policy manual that is this large. But if you understood how the policy manual was set up, you would know that many of those policies are cross-referenced over and over and over again. So if you were a staff person, you have a whole section on policies specific to staff people. But whatever number, and I'm just gonna throw out a number, let's say number one thousand one is the staff, uh, is the staff section. Well, then in the, uh, in, in the student section, that same policy is referenced two thousand one. And then we have another section for instructional personnel, administrative, all of those. So while the manual's this large, the policies actually aren't. It's because so many of those policies are duplicated and cross-referenced multiple times. So that if you're a staff person, if something is different for staff, that's different from students, that's different from administration, that's different from instructional, et cetera, that's why it's so large. I understand that we do need to have these policies. I understand that our staff is waiting on these policies. I'm counting the number of dates. I count eighteen different dates that this board, in some makeup of this board, has participated in, ten of those since October two thousand twenty-one, where I, all five of us would have been present. So we have spent a lot of time on these, and the public has been available to come and be a part of that through the whole time. Additionally, all of these policies are up for review consideration, reading through, all you can cross-reference, you can search by name, title, whatever that you want to look for. But the purpose of having a public hearing is so that the public can be a part of it. And, and if there are questions that arise between now and then, or even that time, then we certainly can adjust and, and do things that need to be done to make it more easily understandable. But I also want to understand and want the community to understand that while a third party is assisting us, a third party has not written our policy. A third party has come in and assisted us with the dozens, if not hundreds, of policies that our district has had in place that haven't necessarily aligned with current Florida statute. And we are trying to become more in compliant with the way the law reads. And that's why we have a third party made up of attorneys and former school board attorneys is who the third party is, who can help us navigate this. And so that's why I'm confident that the third party that we've chosen, as well as dozens, if not nearly all, school districts in the state of Florida uses the same third party for this purpose. All of the things that this board has done to make these policies in a good position so that we can bring them to the public to vote upon, I am comfortable with it. While I agree, I would love it if we could not have to have so many policies. Florida statute dictates that we have so many policies, as well as, uh, things that we just need to help our district run. So that was a really long explanation as to why I understand that we need to have this public hearing, and certainly hear my fellow board members as to their disgust that we have to have such a large policy manual.
Thank you.
I, I believe that Allison did a great job of explaining the importance of this, uh, the policy, and, um, I have no further discussion on this.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Motion passes for one. May I have a motion to approve Adult General Education Grant twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Board Member Thor, seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eight point one to have further discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, the, um, this is, uh, well over the hundred thousand dollar limit that we use pretty much, uh, with all governmental operations in, uh, in Marion County for consent agendas. Uh, it is a, it's an excellent program, uh, and I for one, uh, accelerated my path to success, uh, in the United States Navy, uh, via this GED-type accelerated opportunity. So I'm, 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 I'm very much in favor of it. Uh, what I'd like to comment on, though, is it's so important when we're spending a half million dollars and when we have something this important, uh, to students. Uh, because what it does is it links them to their future. There's so much involved in high school and then moving on to college or to your career. This GED-type pathway, uh, is incredibly, uh, powerful, and anything that helps in it, uh, is important. Um, uh, so I'm, I'm highly in favor of it. Once we touch hundred thousand dollars, we get up to a half million dollars, uh, it's, it's incumbent on us to go ahead and make sure that, uh, that it gets discussed. Uh, and also, if, Superintendent, if there's anything we can do to get, because I know these are looked at out on the internet, to get a dollar sign in front of like five million, or five hundred thousand dollars, for some reason, this software does not put a dollar sign in front of millions of dollars. And it, it drives me crazy because it looks like it's a serial number, uh, to a person that is not familiar with the format. Uh, so it, it's just one, and I just bring it up, and it's not to harangue it in any regard or, or to appear hostile. It's just to say that whoever wrote this program needs to put a dollar sign in front of a dollar amount. Uh, that's all I have. Uh, but I, 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 I yield the floor to the Superintendent.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Mr. Browning. Um, yes, we have requested that, and, and I, I do agree that it's a bit confusing, um, somewhat to say dollar amount. I have a dollar sign that we're used to. We've made that request of them, of their, their software, and we will do so again. Thank you.
And we insist, you know, just-
Yes.
Tell them, tell them Don Browning wants it to happen now. Just, uh, convey that.
We certainly will.
Convey that comment. If, that, that often works.
Thank you.
Chair.
Ms., Ms., Vice Chair Campbell?
Chair, this agenda item is not to spend five hundred seventy thousand dollars, just to ask for it.
Thank you.
This is, this is a grant application that we're submitting to the Department of Education. And so just for the record, this is not for us to spend this money. This is for us to ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Call for vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve First Amendment to Agreement with Frog Street Press LLC?
Motion to approve?
Motion by, by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C nine point one to have further discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, this, uh, again is, uh, an amount that's above the hundred thousand dollar, uh, typical limit for consent agendas. Uh, the, um, this is a, a, a critical education issue. Uh, and when these come up, education's our game, and we should bring these items forward. Uh, Frog Street Press, uh, puts together a program. We're using it. We've been using it, uh, for a period of time. We're now updating it. Uh, but these things slide through. And what if it wasn't a hundred percent? Or what avenue do we have for our teachers? And, and I'm, I'm leading up to something. What if, what avenue do we have, a rhetorical question, for our teachers to judge whether or not this is really getting the job done? Uh, and I'm sure we do have input, but I would like to, I would like to, uh, really concentrate on these programs that get started. They move along. We renew. They go into consent agenda. They just keep moving along while we're moving down in terms of, of, uh, multiple years in academic excellence. These programs just keep coming along. And what I would, what I would propose is we come up with an idea where, where we can look at a teacher, an anonymous evaluation of these programs. It would be so helpful to the board. Uh, not put themselves in any kind of jeopardy, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, being viewed by their peers, but just, just, they have their credentials, they have their opinion. What is it doing? They have their recommendations. I would like to see something like that come, uh, to the board, uh, to help with these, these, uh, issues. Uh, I'm in favor of this. It's three hundred thou-, uh, nearly four hundred thousand. Many of these, these things do update, so it isn't the total amount, it's the update amount. Uh, but it's a, it's an educational issue, and I think we need to, instead of bouncing it ahead two years, and it might get bounced ahead another two years like that, I, I think we need to be a little bit, little bit more careful, uh, in, in terms of how we evaluate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve First Amendment with IXL Learning Inc.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, you pull item C ten for discussion.
Uh, yes, I did, uh, Chair, and again, it hits this criteria, seven hundred thousand dollars, I believe, uh, should be looked at and brought forward, uh, if in fact we do have, uh, some concerns about that level of, of money, nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, as it moves, moves along, um, this is helping students master concepts, uh, in education, and it's a third party. It bothers me that we go out to these third parties so much, and I've really gotten on this train, and I, I'm evaluating a lot of things that way, uh, these days. Third-party packages may not be the best. How do we get the information back? If we have failure, uh, might this not be part of the failure? And as we, as we give out, uh, our, the creation of our instructional package to the students, as we give it out to third parties, uh, it, it worries me. It may not be best, uh, I would like to see it be evaluated by our teachers in the method that, that I just described in the previous item. Uh, I think it would give it a deeper look, if you're going two years out, uh, I would sure like to have that wisdom, uh, the benefit of that wisdom, and I know our students would benefit, uh, if in fact, uh, these things could be, uh, could be tweaked, and tweaked, and tweaked, and maybe other things might jump in on a competitive level. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Ms., uh, Board Member Thor?
Thank you Chair. Uh, once again, I, I must agree with you, uh, Board Member Browning, in the sense that in the old days, teachers were trusted to educate the students in their class. Now, uh, we are governed by standards of, of all kinds, and that does, has given rise to a cottage industry of third parties that are specializing, specialized in providing, uh, programs that meet the, all the standards and requirements that, that were held to, and that's become a lot more expensive. Um, I know from experience that at the school level, teachers are queried about which programs, um, work well with, for them, and, and especially for students which in this case are, uh, students that, you know, really need that extra support. But, the fact of the matter is, until it, that level of oversight changes, it, we're going to continue to see, you know, more and more of this, and probably one of the big reasons then would be because it's defensible, to be able to say this particular program is aligned with state standards, so we're insisting that teachers teach it, uh, which to me is a bit of a shame, but that's where we are.
Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Um, this particular program I'm familiar with because I see my own children use it in my own home, uh, I know that oftentimes, uh, teachers are using this for, actually for homework, um, for this particular program, and students are so technology-driven now, this one is a, a technology-based program, I, I've seen it used in my own home again, specifically for math, it looks like we may be extending that into some other, uh, of the IXL programs, so I have seen the effectiveness of how this has helped my own children, uh, in their math skills from a homework standpoint, so I'm comfortable with this agenda item.
Any further discussion?
It's also nice that it's self-paced.
It is, absolutely. So kids, especially with that math, if they are moving farther ahead than a teacher just continues to assign them algebraic, you know, sections when they're in elementary school, and it really helps prepare them for middle school.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Both have the same sign. May I have a motion to approve First Amendment with National Inventors Hall of Fame Inc.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, understanding pull item C ten point two for discussion.
Uh, yes, thank you Chair. Uh, this is very similar, uh, well over the hundred thousand dollar limit, and, uh, if you go out and look at it online, you won't hear any discussion, cause, uh, of course in a, in a consent, uh, agenda, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't have discussion. Uh, the, um, this third party, eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, broad brush approach, I, I believe in teachers. I used to have a saying, teachers knows, teachers know, knows best. I want to see curriculum developed by these skilled teachers. I may be old-fashioned, and, uh, but, you know, we've, we've done some wonderful things in this country, uh, during my lifetime, and I would like to see, um, the same deal. It may be great, but I want this, I want to see the teachers almost have a up-down call on this, or, or a variation of it, or push back into these companies, uh, let them know that we might start a stampede, uh, throughout the state of Florida, uh, on teacher, teachers know best. Uh, they're trained, they know what's going on, and I could see a day where everything comes down and it's programmed, and it's just too algorithmic for me. Uh, I like the human idea of a teacher. So, I know it's a business meeting, and I know it's all about dollars, and we may get some value out of this, uh, and I go into dollars sometimes, but right now I'm really, really leaning on education, cause that's what we're about. So, I, I, for the same reasons, I would like to see, um, this type educational item from a third party, uh, looked at much more deeply. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Both have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Special Data Share Agreement with Lexia Learning Systems LLC?
Same here.
Moved by Vice Chair, by, uh, Board Member King?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, understanding pull item C ten point three for further discussion.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and let's, uh, we can move quickly on this one, uh, just rerun in your mind of my earlier comments, uh, I need teacher endorsement, uh, but I want to, I want to stress, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, uh, for this. It's, these are very, very large dollars, and we do get the money from various ways, uh, but, uh, I think we could become victims of this style, so, uh, just rerun my earlier, earlier comments, I would like teacher endorsement on this type product, uh, and since it's well over the Marion County, uh, any of the governmental agencies on the hundred thousand dollar limit, uh, it needs to be brought forward, so if someone does have a concern or want to discuss it, they may. Thank you, uh, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Both have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Title, Title Six, what is this? Title Nine, I'm sorry, Title Nine Part A, Education for Homeless Children and Youth Project Year Two Application.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thor?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Board Member Browning. Mr. Browning, you pull this item C eleven point one for discussion.
Yes, thank you Chair. Uh, this is, uh, for sure not a bulk item, uh, the numbers aren't huge, um, a hundred and fifty thousand, but the subject matter is, uh, children, and especially, uh, children that fall under this homeless kind of a concept. Now, that's been moved around a lot, uh, bureaucratically, the homeless definition, and we probably need a better definition for it, uh, uh, almost, almost, well, many, 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 many categories, you may live in with your grandmother, stand with your grandmother, and you're basically homeless, but, 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 but this is a real category with real children, and these are the lowest protection humans, uh, past their birth, as far as I'm concerned. If they don't have a home, your home is where all growth and power and your security comes from. So, while the money is just, just a little over the hundred thousand dollar limit, the subject matter is way beyond it, and we, we work toward helping each of these children, and there are probably some that are, you'd be appalled at this, at the, at the situation of the state that they're in, and if it were not for some of the folks in this very building right behind us, uh, that address those issues, um, uh, those children, uh, might stumble and fail, uh, in life. So, home is where it's, is where it is, it's the security, it's a beautiful thing, and, and I, I couldn't, couldn't abide this going along as a bulk item and not being recognized, uh, and the whole community recognizing, uh, what we do and how much we care for putting a child in as, uh, the best possible circumstance we can. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Browning. Again, this particular agenda item is not for us to spend a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, it's for us to request it. This is another grant application. Uh, we were funded in year one with a hundred twenty thousand dollars, and we are requesting for funding again for year two, and so this agenda item is a request for funding of a hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Both have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Renewal Agreement with Edent, Edmentum, Inc.
Same here.
Moved by Vice, uh, by Ms. Campbell, uh, Ms. King?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, you pull item C thirteen point two for discussion.
Yes, thank you Chair. A, a strong education issue, uh, this is about near and dear to my heart, uh, I don't know that they're, they may be failing in some regard academically, but they may be some of the brightest students, uh, uh, we have, but this is a rescue package, it's beautiful, it's a, it's about eight hundred bucks, uh, under the hundred thousand dollar limit, but, uh, who cares, it needs to be brought forward. Uh, I would like teacher evaluation on this one as well, because it won't, you, you, i- if there's a little gap, say it's in math, say it's in, uh, uh, some other discipline, uh, reading perhaps, uh, it's a teacher that's going to solve it, and the, um, uh, i- it doesn't get more important than moving these people along, but moving them along properly with some sense of, um, golly, success, idealism, uh, because often they are the brightest students, you just don't know their circumstances, you don't know why they might be failing or might have a gap in their program, and this keeps them up and running with their peers, and they don't fall, uh, uh, back, uh, which can be a horrendous problem. Uh, as a, as a child gets older and older, they're recognized by their peers as having fallen back, and, and I love the idea of addressing the deficiency and moving them along with the chronological age. Uh, so they, uh, I, I, while it's a dollar under, or eight hundred dollars under the hundred thousand dollars, it's, uh, it does qualify to not go through in bulk, because it's a critically important item. Thank you Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Both have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Disposition of Tangible Property?
Motion to approve?
Moved, same here, second.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, pull.
Yes, thank you Chair. Uh, we, we spent a lot of time on this at the last meeting on, uh, on marketing, uh, used, the used market, and it's rather, uh, it, it's just appalling to me that we would not more strongly address the used market as compared to, uh, disposal market. Uh, there's always money to be made, um, along the way, and if, if, if you would like to know more about the discussion on this, if you look at the workshop from last week, uh, it was, uh, it was very intense and a great presentation, uh, with the individuals that work in this program. It's taxpayer money, uh, we want to address used rather than, uh, junk, and that's a very broad-brush statement, but there's less money in junk, there's a lot of money in used, and many of these items can go down that, uh, that path. Uh, this is over a million dollars, and we were somewhere under twenty thousand dollars total revenue on some of these items, so we aren't selling the, uh, molecules, the atoms or the, or, uh, subatomic particles, we're selling useful, useful commodities, useful items, uh, manufactured items, and it's, uh, there is a used market typically. Thank you Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Both have the same sign, pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve bid, uh, three nine three zero eight H Food Service Juice and Juice Product Term Contract?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. Thor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, you pull for a discussion.
Thank you Chair, yes. Uh, a million dollars warrants discussion well over that limit, uh, that we look at. We must be vigilant on a million dollars, and I, I as a businessman can't handle a single bid. Uh, there's something wrong. Uh, this is a commodity item, uh, Chicago's, uh, commodity exchange, uh, orange juice futures, uh, yeah, orange juice, a million dollars, uh, it, it, it needs more than one bid. Uh, I know we tried, something's wrong somewhere when you put out sixty-some, sixty-six invitations and you get back one. Uh, that, that doesn't cut it for me, so I just like to, I'd like to, uh, set the alarm on this one, that we need to do, we, we need to dig in on this, and, uh, every million dollars counts. Uh, thank you Chair.
Thank you. I do want to say something on this one, uh, for the record, we did send out invitations, as, uh, Board Member Browning just stated, we did send out invitations to bid, sixty-six invitations were sent out, and only one vendor, um, submitted a no bid, submitted, so, um, I thank the district for doing their due diligence on this. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. May I have a motion to approve, uh, memorandum of understanding between Marion County Public Schools and the Marion Education Association?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, you pull item C twenty point one for discussion.
Yes, thank you Chair. This is pay for our employees, uh, it should be open and discussed, uh, especially at this stage, uh, it's, i- it's, it's all of our funds, we, uh, from almost every source, uh, find their way ultimately into this, it's very big money, um, it's our moral duty, I think, to the community, students, family, and the employees, uh, that we address this, especially when we get to the end stage and we've pulled things together, so, uh, teachers, support personnel, bus drivers, uh, you're everything in this, uh, with- Without success at the teacher level, we will not succeed as a, as an organization. This is a really big deal. And I say, let's celebrate and let's, let's look at it and let's bring it, to the extent we can, bring it public. It's a big deal. It's the income of these teachers, the support personnel, these bus drivers, these, all these people. And this comes to us various ways. But it's, it's, it's worked on so hard, and they work, and compensation does matter. Anybody that works knows how important it is. So I can't let compensation to our employees and agreement go through a, a bulk approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Again, for the record, for clarity, this is not, and this has nothing to do with paraprofessionals, bus drivers, or bus A's. This is with the M E A. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of twenty four thousand, four hundred twenty four dollars. Three thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars to Bellevue High School from Mid-Florida Regional Manufacturers Association. One thousand dollars to Bellevue High School from Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. One thousand dollars to Donella Elementary School from Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. Seven thousand, seven hundred dollars to Madison Street Academy of Visual and Performing Arts from Madison Street Academy, PTA. Three thousand, five hundred nine dollars to Dr. N H Jones Elementary School from Dr. N H Jones Parent Organization. Six thousand dollars to Oak Crest Elementary School from their business partner, the Smith Family Foundation via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Creola Art Supplies valued at one thousand dollars to Spar Elementary School from Creola Corporate Headquarters. One thousand dollars to Westport High School from Dr. Rialdo Fakari. They have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Thor. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Vice Chair Campbell, could you give us our thanks tonight?
Absolutely, with pleasure. These are always the fun ones to talk about whenever we have all this money coming in from our community because they see the value of what we're doing in Marion County Public Schools and the value of the education brought on by these different schools and so forth. So grateful for all of our business partners. Some of this is a part of that, as well as the work of our parent organizations, parent, the PTA and so forth, and, and just others that, again, have seen the value of public education in Marion County. We can't do it without the support of our community, and certainly that financial support is always welcome. So thank you so much to all those in the community who continue to support all we do.
Thank you. The following administrative briefing and work sessions are scheduled for June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine o'clock a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the Code of Student Conduct, one of two, and naming of Early Learning Academy. That's this Thursday. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July seventh, twenty twenty-two at nine o'clock a.m. The purpose of this work session is to discuss annual equity report, code of student conduct, two of two, and utilization of federal relief dollars and expected student outcomes. All right, we're at the close. Attorney Powers, anything from you?
No, sir.
All right. Ms. Martinez Lopez, anything?
Yes, Chair, I have two updates. Board members, you each have a key. That key is now for where your mailboxes and your filings cabinets are located. That is Building Three, Room Eleven, which is at the very end of where Dr. Gullett's office is, at the very last. So that key will allow you to get your mail and to also to your filing cabinets. And there's also a conference table there, a desk, and a computer should you need that space.
Need space.
The second thing is, I also have put in your mailbox your financial disclosure forms. If you did not already submit them, they are due by July first. So just please make sure that you do have them completed and submitted by July first.
Ms. Martinez Lopez, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Chair.
Ms. Martinez, I have a question.
Okay, I'll follow you, sir.
Ms. With that room being down there, is there, who, who, who's going to be doing the scheduling of that room? If we need to use that room?
You'll contact me if you need to schedule that room.
Okay, okay.
Complex.
Ms. Browning?
Yes, uh, what, what was the, uh, I missed the first part of your, your comments. The, uh, this is a new room?
Yes.
Okay, could you?
Office was located. It's now considered Board Services Conference Room. So that would be your conference room if you need to use it for any reason.
And say the name of the, the room again?
The building is Room, Building Three.
Building Three.
Building Three, Room Eleven.
I see. And it's in this facility, it's, it's, it's on this campus? Okay, thank you. Building Three, Room Eleven. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez.
You're welcome.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I just have a few brief items. I do want to thank you again for recognizing our dedicated employees tonight. It was great to have them here and to recognize their longevity with our district and their commitment. I also want to thank, in relation to that, the Public Education Foundation of Marion County because they too then stepped up this year and held a reception so that we could thank them again in, in person. It was lovely. So I wanted to thank them for, for their support and recognizing, again, our employees. I want to mention the perfect audits, again, thanking you for recognizing perfect audits, which is not an easy task. So at our Leadership Institute a few weeks back, we had our, our teams there, our team leaders and, and principals and department heads. And one of the things that we've added this year, I asked for the team to do training on how to achieve a perfect audit. And the reason this is important is because we have to be good stewards of our public funds and ensure that everything that we're doing is aligned with not only statute and the law, but making sure that our money is used for student success. And so I just want to thank the team for providing that training and for principals being there and assistant principals and sharing the practices that led them to that. So much more to come on that, but I thought that was important so that we're sharing elevating, excuse me, best practices. Summer school is in full swing, and so I hope if you have not had the opportunity that you are able to go out and see our student learning. I was visiting a school this morning, and it's just exciting that we have thirty eight hundred students currently in summer school. And it's, it's really exciting to see them in there and the teachers engaging them with high-quality learning. So please, if you have not yet, feel free to join one of our sites that are hosting summer school. And last but not least, I think it's important to mention that you tonight approved a number of curriculum resources. And those come together, and it seems like a lot tonight, and that's intentional. That's so that in the summertime, we bring them to you at once so the teachers can have the resources they need to reach each and every child in our district. Make no mistake, and I say this to the team, I said this a few weeks ago, I say this all the time to the team. We know that research is really clear. Teacher effectiveness is number one on student impact, number one. And so what we're doing and what you've approved tonight is putting curriculum resources in the hands of teachers to reach every student, for student outcomes. And we talk about implementation versus outcomes. And so teachers, we need to provide them with the tools they need to reach every child. So I thank you for your diligence in reviewing those and supporting those needs. I also too want to mention that Ms. Talbert Irving is here, and under her leadership, all of the intervention programs and curriculum were reviewed this year with a team of other personnel from her team and schools and teachers, principals, to review all of the curriculum, including all the interventions that are used. And the key question is, what's the evidence of the impact of this on our students? That will continue to be our way forward in our practice and looking at data to inform decisions of items that we bring to you. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Browning?
Yes, comments?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. Yes. Trying to keep this, uh, keep this short. Let's see. We can look back to earlier comments. The, the, the speaker's podium is coming closer, and it does help. I would like to see a, this assemblage of, of tables moved closer. I have several reasons, and the reasons are sight, sound, and communication. It, it just, it just works better for everyone involved. I will, and I never apologize for my age because I think age actually enhances abilities. However, I will say that the sound issues are a big deal. And I, I just want to make, make comment that when you're just a few feet from someone, it is so easy to communicate, and that's really what we want to achieve in these meetings when, when staff and community come forward. Hearing is a big deal when you, it isn't all about volume. As a matter of fact, I will say, I don't know if any of you have ever, or ever served in the military or ever dealt with butts where you had high-impact sound for a, a long period of time and then got into a tinnitus scenario. It does subside. It is not ongoing. However, it comes back quickly when excess sound, especially unnecessary excess sound, comes forward. We've got some giant speakers here, and people are right here, and there is nothing in the way for these people to come forward. I would request that we look at this as board members and we count my comments on the way we're set up. Not, I'm not exclusive here because I have four other board members. But this has actually been set up by a department head rather than the board, and I would like to get those comments out there. The sound and the echo will lose the message. So I'm putting that out. I hope that it finds a, a cooperative audience. And, and the louder the speaker, the greater the damage if you have tinnitus situations. And I know one of our first, first and, and most prestigious points in our manual is we won't discriminate on age or military status or disabilities. And why, I, while I think I do not have disabilities because I do not, I consider them abilities. And I've actually gone down and had my hearing checked, and it's excellent. However, if you add bass sounds, it distracts and it camouflage. So in a performance of my duties, I would like those comments to be considered. Let's see. Graduation. Something that we might do, I noticed, and I really evaluated, the sound system over at Lake, at Bellevue Middle was excellent, excellent, first class. Everybody was picking up, and you could tell. Everything was super. The sound system that we use at the livestock pavilion needs work. It desperately, if we, if we're going to use that facility for future graduations or other, other uses like that that are beyond livestock-type activities, we need to look at that, and we need to look at it hard. I could see people that could not follow the principal, could not follow the valedictorian, could not follow the superintendent because of the range and the quality of sound in that facility. So it's just something that I just wanted to bring to the board. You know, we can, we can talk it up. We all have connections, and, and I'll, I'll be, I'll be pushing that because our, our graduations, if we use those facilities, maybe we use a different facility like over some of the beautiful things that are on the west side of the city, are some, some beautiful facilities that have excellent sound system. Let's see. Stanton, Weersdale, the, this board member's report on that area. We had school scenario. We weren't able to get one of our people out, but we did have, we have a Bible school scenario there. We did have government officials out, and it was, they were so well-received. It was absolutely incredible. We were able to tour the Stanton safety issues with the Marion County government officials. That, that was very, very important, and I think will, it'll reap benefits in our walk-in zone. I have some, some further comments, but I, and I, and I give these in all genuine, genuineness, humility, and a collegial hope that we can speak. One of our speakers tonight was actually touching on it, that we can, we can be as professional and as, as kind and decent as, even in disagreement. And we have a fair sing, uh, single standard, not a double standard. And I bring this up because I've just endured five months of investigation. And now that I can talk about it because it's concluded, five months of investigation was done at a very high cost to this, I, I don't have the numbers. I've asked for them, and I'll get them. They're, I just asked for them today. But the, uh, the idea, uh, the imbalance of, I recently made a, made a complaint request that was eliminated in three days. Now, that would have been appropriate for my investigation that went on for five months. The, the lack of balance between those two things is what I'm talking about. Not the parties involved, not the issues.
Attorney Powers, is that something that could be discussed in this forum?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's a, I'm, I'm referring to the newspaper article. And the newspaper article goes on in page after page after page. It says Browning's a great guy, no hostile environment. Then it goes on, and the, the items that get brought forward, no one, you could, you could change the name. No one would want those anonymous comments to be made out in public. It's called public humiliation. And, and I'm saying this for myself, but I'm saying it also for all board members. No one should ever endure something like this. And then I receive, to my request, certified letter, we have no duty, no responsibility, and no standing. Well, if that's the case, then why would it be going in the other direction? Five months of standing and then a report that goes public? And the report goes public. I know those things can be changed because one of the items dealt with my trips to the Mayo Clinic, to the, with this individual up in, that was hired, Stephanie Marchman at the Gray Robinson Attorney's Office that conducted this program. And I very specifically indicated that that was so far off base, out of bounds, HIPAA, any other state law, and that's what we operate under, or our, our policies. And so it was removed. And, and gratefully, I will not, I will not put my medical records out in front of anyone, nor should anyone ever be dealt with that way. So what I'm saying here is that we can be So what I'm saying here is that we can be much more professional. I noticed that this newspaper picks up at the end, like tonight I'm going first. If I mention an individual, that's one thing, but if I don't mention an individual, I'm making comments. You can make comments, but any personal attacks back, and the chair is always last, toward an individual must be, under Robert's rules, must be dealt with then, not waited a week or two weeks until another meeting. So that's where they're picking up these headlines. And perhaps you don't get blasted by the headlines, but I do several times a week. And I, I'll just say, this newspaper has a long history of very liberal comments. So we should not feed into it for anyone and we should not ever have public humiliation or harassment for an individual. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. King?
Yes, good evening. I would just like to begin with talking about the Florida School Board Association last week, that four of those school board members and the superintendent last week. It was wonderful to be there. We could see what's happening in other districts. There was a great speaker. There was a lot of discussion on student input, the outcome, and, sorry, I had that wrong. Yep, that's right. I was like, I guess, it was the student input, the output, and the outcome. And what's most important, the lot of discussion as our superintendent so elegantly put earlier is our student outcome. And there was a lot of emphasis and I truly believe and know that this board wants nothing more than for our students to succeed and have the best student outcome for them and let's focus on them. As board members, we can sit here, we can complain, we can be egotistical, we can point fingers, we can be a huge distraction as we've found, you know, in the past. But I no longer want to be part of that or acknowledge that. I want us to focus on student outcomes. So I'm just gonna leave that part. I also want to address something that was mentioned tonight. There was a question that was raised this evening, if, if any of us had ever been in the military besides Don Browning. And as I actually was not and never have been enlisted in a military branch, I am proud to say that I am the wife of a 22-year Navy veteran. And I was a military wife. And often, military spouses, they are unrecognized and they're underappreciated. I am also the daughter of, of Vietnam veteran to my father, who I visited last week for his first birthday at the Florida National Cemetery. And now he's in heaven. But I also had the time to observe the thousands of men and women who have sacrificed everything they had for our wonderful country. And with today, it is Flag Day and it's a day to honor our flag, which is representative of our wonderful country. Old Glory is awesome. Also, I did, I was reading something today and I don't know, maybe I was just out there, but you know how you learn something new every day? And they talked about it earlier, about in 1777, there was a 13-star flag. And there was only one president that served under that flag, the very first flag. And that was our first president, George Washington. So I just wanted to bring that up. I just found it interesting. It's educational, it's history, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Board Member Thoreau?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I certainly concur, Board Member King, with, with the items that you shared. You know, in the end, we're all up here for one mission and one mission only, and that's kids. And the outcomes that each and every child experiences, we have the noble opportunity and the obligation to make those outcomes as beneficial to that student's ongoing success that we can possibly support them in while we have them with us. And I think about kids that start with us even in pre-K, let alone kindergarten, and we have kids with unique needs that stay with us until their 22nd birthday. That is almost a good chunk of someone's lifetime that we're responsible for, you know, ultimately, each and every moment that we're here. So I certainly take that mission very seriously. Fortunately, I still enjoy almost each and every moment of, of every day that I'm honored to be involved in this work. And speaking of Flag Day, I, I thought it was very interesting that it was two teachers over the years that really promoted the celebration of Flag Day and, and the importance of it. And that does circle right around to all the retirements and, and long years of, of service at so many levels. Anyone that's involved in a school system is, is an educator in, in some way. And I know that that was exemplified tonight by, by the crowd that was in front of us. And it was especially a little bit emotional for me because there were a couple of colleagues that I started with before they even had their own kids, you know? And now here they are. And so it's, it's an amazing career. I would encourage anyone that is brave, courageous, committed, and passionate to jump in with us in public education. It's, it's an amazing opportunity. And when it comes to military service, I, I must admit that if I have one big regret, it is that I didn't serve. My father graduated from the Naval Academy and then also did his Strategic Command Training at the Air Force Academy because that hadn't even been started yet when he was doing all of that. And my sister and I were both born on Effie Warren Air Force Base. So I was, I was raised with that sense of, of duty and, and commitment and I'll always be grateful for that. And I think my, my father, if he had just pushed a little bit more how much horses are integral to the military, then I probably would have jumped right in with both feet. But in, in those days, it wasn't as common for women to serve as it is now. And, and you know, who knows, maybe sometime, some way I'll get the opportunity and I'll sure appreciate it. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. Bishak Campbell?
Yes, thank you. And I echo all of you basically, Happy Flag Day. And that was actually going to be the very first, I'm so grateful that we had the presentation from the folks from the Veterans Park. Those gentlemen are, are doing great work there and I had the opportunity to work with them a little bit in the nonprofit sector. So I'm excited that they were here this evening. Thank you, Ms. DeBick, for, for coordinating that. And so again, Happy Flag Day, everyone. Also, thanks to the team for recognizing the longevity of our employees. I have watched other governmental bodies do that for years and so I'm grateful that we're bringing that to Marion County Public Schools because I have hoped that this district would start doing that too. And so thank you to the team who's also brought that together. And also, as Dr. Gullett said, kudos to the 23 schools with perfect audits. I also wanted to express again how excited and grateful I am that we have now scheduled our policy review for approval for July 12th. It's been a really long process, but the finish line is in sight. And I do think that we're going to really be a better district because of the things that we're going to be put forth in policy. We did mention the Florida School Board Association Conference. Also during that time, we learned about a program for procurement of goods that finds products at the best possible prices and completes the competitive bid process for those using it. I noticed we had several items we're purchasing where only one or two vendors submitted information for consideration, as well as one of the internal audits we approved tonight had a minor audit finding when purchasing something for students that did not have a competitive bid pricing in it. So I recommend that we look into the FSBA Partner Program that we learned about today, over this past week, and I'm not going to name that one, but it is a partner program for the Florida, with the Florida School Board Association to see if we could help our departments and schools find the best possible pricing, including required bids necessary for purchasing. Also tonight, we approved two more updated job descriptions and my fellow board members know how that is a sticking point for me. So I'm grateful we're correcting so many of those and will continue to adjust others as needed. But personally, when I was thinking about it, it would be a great opportunity for a collegiate intern interested in human resources to help with updating those job descriptions. I remember the duties I had as an intern when I was in graduate school, one semester in a Division One Sports Information Office. And what we would be doing, asking a collegiate intern to help us with updating job descriptions, would be very similar to the media guide writing and editing and things like that that I did as an intern myself when I was in that kind of role. And so seems very similar. I think that might be a recommendation to consider if that's something that we wanted to pursue. I also know, we've discussed a few times, that we've requested an update of the inter-local agreement committee work and I've brought it up a couple of, of meetings. I was wondering if we might be able to schedule a work session in the near future on that specific topic. Based on conversations I've had with other elected leaders and community members, I'm not completely certain that we as a board have consensus on what that update could be or what the changes are. And I know Ms. Thoreau's been doing a lot of work on it, but as I've read through the interlocal agreement, I'm not certain what the changes are that actually need to be made other than to the appendices. So if we, Chair, possibly could have a, a work session topic in an upcoming work session to talk actually about that interlocal agreement and what this board wants to see out of that conversation, again, without knowing and being a, a party to those meetings and thank you, Ms. Thoreau, for serving us well, but I'm, I am interested in knowing if we possibly could discuss that collectively and so we know what we want to be presenting in those. So I would like to request if we could add that to an upcoming work session, Chair. Additionally, for the record, I will actually not be in attendance during Thursday's board work session, but I have read through the presentations and I've spoken with those who are giving the presentations and any questions that I have, I'll be able to discuss. Additionally, while they are the work sessions, they're not the actual voting of neither the Code of Student Conduct nor the vote on the naming of the Early Learning Academy. So I'll be a part of additional discussion prior to the votes that occur on both of those items. And finally, the FSBA Conference, as Ms. King so eloquently noted, reminded me of what our focus needs to be, which is on student outcomes. And that's where I want to stress that though I often talk about my students, you know, sometimes I do bring up in work sessions and so forth, I talk about, and my students just did this, or I just had a student that did that, my background is from the business sector. I don't, I am not from education at all. I teach at the collegiate level, which is quite different than what we do in pre-K-12 education within Marion County Public Schools. So I will admit and, and almost ashamedly so, that my focus has been really heavy since becoming a school board member on processes, policies, procedures, and systems. I even ran on ABC attendance, which I believe we're working on in this upcoming Student Code of Conduct, budgeting and what we're working on with potentially moving to school-based budgeting, and communication, which is also process and, and policy and things that we're working on. Those are the things that I have really, really focused on and I think that we're definitely moving in the right direction on all of those things. However, I'm guilty to say I have not been focused on student outcomes as heavily as I need to be and that changes now. So we as a board, based on everything we heard at FSBA, I think we all sort of made that collective commitment, just looking at each other, not really saying it to each other, but I think we all kind of felt that twinge, that that's the direction that we have to be focused moving forward now that we have the, some of these things, again, policies that will be approved soon and processes and procedures and things that are moving in a, in a direction that's really positive for this district. Student outcomes will be my number one focus moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Just briefly, the next interlocal committee meeting is Monday, June 27th at 1:00 PM and the goal is to come up with at least a draft to present and our attorney will be getting that at, at some point. And one of the big takeaways for me was so far in this process that the comprehensive plan would have to be amended in order to include concurrency again. The, the interlocal agreement is, is separate from that, that, that is an action that would need to be taken. We would need to request for that action to be taken. And I know that that's something that you were looking into as far as the process and the procedure of when to make that request. We know where it goes, but, but the timing of, of that. So that's just briefly and, and I love the idea of, of having some updates in a work session. And so we may be better served to do that sometime after June 27th because it'd be nice to have a draft document in front of us to look at and, and weigh in on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Chair, yeah, on that, on that note, I do have some, some medical procedures that are, that are coming up and I, I may, I may or may not be, be able to attend each of those, but I will stay in touch for those. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Again, thank you all for being here tonight, to our staff that are here, to all those that came out earlier this evening to celebrate. We had a wonderful start of this meeting with the celebrations of those who have put in many, many, many years of service to our district. So as I said, I think when I added up, it was about 497 years of experience, of time that they have invested in the Marion County Public Schools District collectively. So we thank all of those staff members. But also, again, I also want to thank all those schools that, that had, or those entities of this district that had perfect audits. That means you're doing, doing it right and you're doing it every day, doing it right every day. So we appreciate that and I know our CFO appreciates that as well and all those, our taxpayers and everyone, the citizens around that, that see that the money is being spent right and without flaws. To have no findings is truly an accomplishment. So I think, that's why we're one of the, we, we get so many national acclaimed awards to our finance department and to our schools because of the people that are doing those jobs every day. So again, thank you for that. I do want to clarify something that I kind of heard and I, I've been hearing it for several weeks and I, I just want to clarify for the public in regards to items that are pulled for discussion on our, on our, in our meetings. It's, it's almost alluded to the fact there's a, that, that this board has some thresholds, some dollar amount restriction or threshold for items to be pulled. There is no dollar amount threshold to be pulled. Any item on the agenda can be pulled and it doesn't require a, a six, six-figure number to be pulled. It can, we could pull, if it's a $2.50 item on the agenda, that item can be pulled. So just for clarity of our, to our public, there is, this board has no restriction or threshold amount to be pulled. Individuals may have threshold amounts, but the board collectively does not have a, a threshold amount. I, I heard our, in our superintendent's comments that we have 3,800 students that are currently attending summer school. That is a hu, a, a large number of kids and parents and families that saw the need for these students to be in summer school and I wish that number was even greater. I really wish that number was greater because of, we know that if these kids are in summer school and working hard throughout the summer, that we can make some more gains and have some greater student outcomes. We, we, we talked about some of the items that were pulled tonight in, in regards to curriculum and grants and different things that were pulled and discussed. And, and with those, those high-dollar amounts, those curriculums that were discussed, I, I see those curriculums as being able to, the district, making decision to put the tools and the resources in the hands of our staff so that we can get the positive student outcomes that we have, that we desire this district to have. The only way that we're going to move the number as, as folks say for this district or move the needle on this district is that we empower our classrooms, our schools with the resources and the tools that they need to move the needle. Our, our superintendent and her team, they are the experts on this and they understand what they need to have. It's like sending someone- It's like sending someone to, to fight a, a battle and you don't give them the proper equipment. And we can't, we can't do battle in education without the right curriculum, without the right equipment, without the right tools and the right weapons to defeat these kids not being literate or not being able to read or not being able to do basic math or the higher level maths or things, or understanding science and chemistry. So I, I applaud this district for, for taking the, the charge to go ahead and get the tools to request the tools, the necessary weapons that they're going to need to fight this battle. So I appreciate you, Dr. Gullett, for that because we, we as a board, those that were there last week, talked about in every session, student outcomes, student outcomes, student outcomes. If there was one thing that everybody, that even like our colleagues from around the state walked away from, it was, the, the term was student outcomes. We talked about student input, we heard about outputs, but we need to have student outcomes. And when we have student outcomes, everybody wins. The community wins, the, the schools win, the students win most of all. So we can't be so focused on, on all of the distractions that we may deal with, distractions. I won't, I won't get into the, the individual items that I feel that are distractions, but we, we deal with distractions. And that has nothing to do with student outcome. And, and we need to do the business of the district and deal with student outcomes and empower our people whom we pay a lot of money according to our, our audits, according to our budgets, everything. Give them what they need and, and make sure that we have those student outcomes. I too, Ms. King, heard the comment from, in the community review or comment section about have we been veterans? Are we, are we veterans? No, I'm not a veteran. But because I'm not a veteran does not mean that I don't have any kinship to veterans. My father fought in World War II. I have an older brother who fought in Vietnam. So just because we did not serve ourselves does not mean that we don't have a, a liking or understanding of military service. We have all respect, I have all respect, and I believe all of our board members do, all respect for those who have served in our country. And we honor those who not only served in our country, for our country, but those who have served and even sacrificed their lives for our country, who sacrificed their lives to defend the freedoms and the rights that we as citizens enjoy every day, and, and the, the rights and freedoms of being citizens of this, let me say this, let me, and you can underline this, this already great country. Not great again, but this already great country. We, we have people that have died and shed their blood for that. And so I appreciate, I appreciate every veteran that has served, and I honor those all the time, all those that have served and sacrificed their lives and their families, and their families. Because when you serve, you're not just serving just yourself, but you're serving you and your family. I have a frat brother in here right now that served in several wars, but I appreciate them right now for what they do. So again, as I conclude my comments on tonight, if it's not about student outcome, it really is really, it really has no, no, nothing to do with what we as a board should be doing. If it's not about moving the needle for our district, if it's not about making sure that kids are being successful, I'm, I'm not going to continue to have idle conversations about things that really have nothing to do with empowering our staff to be successful and getting the positive student outcomes that we need. The distractions, that's what they're, they're meant to do, distract or pull us away from those things that we need to be dealing with. And to be honest with you, that's not what we were elected for. Those of us who were elected, we were elected to deal with and get student outcomes. So that concludes my comments for tonight. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received alternative placements list for students through May 25th, 25th, May 25th, 2022. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a time request to speak on the child placement matter?
No, Chair, no, sir.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve expulsion of student JD 22-124E, JD 22-125E, JD 22-126, JD 22-127, JD 22-130, JD 22-131, JD 22-132, JD 22-133, JD 22-134, JD 22-136, JD 22-137E, JD 22-138, JD 22-139, JD 22-140, JD 22-142, and JD 22-145 with educational services for the entire 2022, 2023 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member McKean.
Chair, I'm sorry, did we miss JD 22-135? I think that one was not a part of that. I heard 134, and then I heard 136.
There is no 135.
Oh, okay.
Is there a 135?
There's a 135 in my packet. Pulled? Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. This concludes the televised and business portions of the meeting. Meeting is adjourned or recessed, meeting is recessed at 7:46 PM.